I'd like to call this meeting to order, beginning of 20 August 2015. At this time, I'm asking you to stand for a moment and sign a prayer, afterwards we'll go to the play to the leaders. Alright?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Now you realize what happened?
It was the tea.
It was the tea. Now you can pray. A moment and sign a prayer. Maybe Cedar? Okay, who do the leaders speak?
The mission of the force of the public schools is to challenge the minds, challenge the bodies, challenge the dreams of all students while focusing on excellence.
Thank you. At this time, uh, Mr. Mayor, Lieutenant.
Reverend Fleming, Mrs. Hines.
Present.
Mr. Lamb.
Present.
Mr. Nance, Mr. Parent.
Present.
Reverend Patello.
Present.
Dr. Whitaker.
Present.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Bridgeford.
Present.
Seven members present, two members absent. Mr. Nance is absent due to family illness and Reverend Fleming is absent due to illness.
Call your attention to the agenda, I'd like to make the following changes. Item 3.4, discussion, MWB report will be deferred until the next meeting. The Brazil says she would not have it, would not have it ready in time for this meeting. She asked that she could bring it in for the next one, we told okay on that. Item 3.10 has been withdrawn, renewedified by the parent, they're withdrawing that item. And I want you to add a 4.2, superintendent relocation, just information for the board.
Say it again?
Superintendent relocation. I, uh, call your attention to item 3.1, roll call vote, uh, for minutes. We have minutes before you, uh, July 11th, 2015, July 25th, 2015, July the 2nd, 2015, and July the 3rd, uh, and August the 1st, 2015.
No more approval.
The 2nd.
It's been moved proper second that we adopt the minutes as given in the discussion. If not, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Mr. Parent.
Yes.
Reverend Patello.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Bridgeford.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Good, thank you. Item 3.2, uh, so roll call votes, student activity fund regulations, Dr. Bracer?
Um, yes, the information you see is in your, in your packet.
I have it.
Excuse me. We didn't approve the agenda.
We did? Oh, great, oh my goodness.
Well, see, I'm not the only one.
Hold on a minute, if we didn't approve the agenda, let's get that approved, I'm sorry. I know I made a reference, I thought I was...
You made the changes, but you didn't do it in the...
Oh, excuse me, I'm moving too fast. I back to the approval of the agenda, it was sports pleasure. You had the changes.
No more approval.
Move for approval of the corrections.
Corrections. It's moved proper second that we approve the agenda as given in the discussion. If not, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Reverend, I'm sorry, Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Mr. Parent.
Yes.
Reverend Patello.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Bridge.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
We can't take off long time, see what happens. We just go along and whack, we got a lot of secrets. Okay, I apologize. Okay, now back to the student activity fund regulations.
Okay, this, uh, for the roll call vote, Brittany, you, does anybody need any further information on this?
Uh, on page 11. I don't have any issues, but I think when you do the training, uh, with staff, that we really focus in on the conflict of interest, loans, personal check cashing, and there's a statement in there under reimbursement for expenditure of personal funds. It's the second, uh, sentence, reimbursements for expenses not supported by documentation will be be only with the written approval of the principal. The use of the personal credit cards by a principal, bookkeeper, club sponsor, teacher, da-da-da, shall not be standard practice for paying for student activity fund expenses. I just, that should be rare.
Yes.
And the only thing I, I think about is reimbursements for expenses not supported with documentation is only approved by the principal. It seems to me that there's ought to be an approval, there ought to be two people approval, and I don't know who it would be, unless it's approval of the principal and the assistant principal, but just having one person approve.
Well, this falls in line with our whole procedure where the principal is the final authority.
Exactly, I understand that. But it, when I read it, I said, hmm, if there's, if you don't, if you're not following, the only document, if you don't have any documentation, then the principal is the only person that can approve it. I'm just saying, it might be another individual, but it might be signed off by two people, so it protects the principal. I just, that was just me when I read it.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that's the easy fix, we can add another level.
I don't know what the rest of the board members feel, I just think one person, the president, is kind of...
Yeah, I agree with what you were saying. Are there occasions where the principal also seeks reimbursement?
Yes, they, they wouldn't be the one approving their own reimbursement, then there would be a second level.
Okay, 'cause that was, that's a little vague, and everyone says only the principal. Well, maybe it should state that.
Okay.
That the principal would have to have approval from the superintendent or someone, because that seems a little loose.
Okay.
Mr. Lamb?
I have, I have just two quick things. I noticed, um, under page 12 more, the gifts and requests received by schools. It seems as though, I mean, it covers gifts, donations, requests, and so forth. And, and when you read it, I, I just picked up this is more along the lines of like, say, organizations wanting to do these things. But where exactly in the policy does it cover, I mean, let me give you an example. Say if an individual wanted to donate money to, say, the athletic department for a specific thing, where would that be covered in here, or is it covered?
This is on the gifts that individual or organization.
So then, if I'm understanding this, then say if, uh, I'll just use me as an example, if I, if I wrote a check for some, for some kind of equipment for a sport, for a specific school, are we saying that the school can take that check, but then the school can determine how they want to see it spent?
No, they would have to follow the guidelines of the person that's donating.
They would?
Yeah, you have to follow the guidelines that the donor has established.
And then on page, um, 14, under subsection, uh, 6, external organizations, so, and so forth, well, if you go down to the bottom of the page where it starts out with booster clubs, parent teachers, associations, and so forth, it's my understanding at this time that, um, for PTAs under their, their state and national bylaws, they do not have to do what we are asking them to do in, in this policy. So it, it's a violation, um, at that point.
Okay, I, I can look into that, 'cause I wasn't aware of it, so that's something I could look into.
Room out there talk.
Yeah, I just wanna get, to get more clarity, you said they don't have to do...
Well, like, for example, on page 14, um, and I just talked to the president of the PTA council before I came in here, Donna Clifton, because I had some, um, questions about it. Basically, what's going on here is, um, this is basically saying that, and I'm gonna read, if I can just read it a little bit, Chairman Bridgeford. Booster clubs, parent teacher associations, parent organizations, foundations, I'm providing school support via fundraising, volunteer, or other services are required to do the following. Obtain written approval at the beginning of each school year, no later than the first day of school, from the school principal to perform any school support activities. That right there, i- i- I think for anything is, is too stringent. I mean, no one's gonna know everything and be able to put in writing everything on the first day of school. But to go further, according to the PTA bylaws, they do not have to turn in to a principal or a school an annual IRS return. They do not have to give a list of board members' officers with their, uh, addresses, phone number, and so forth. And, I mean, they don't have to provide the school principal the minutes of the organizational meetings. They don't have to give a financial report. These are all things that, that they're not required to do under the bylaws that are set forth. That governs them as an actual body. And since they are not part of the school, but they are an individual organization themselves, by asking them of this, we would, this would actually be putting them in conflict with their own bylaws.
Yeah, well, I, I wasn't finished just a second. But with that, I, I believe it's their own bylaws, but, or to protect what, the integrity of what we're doing, outside of the PTA, let's say, let's say some individual just wants to raise money for himself, and he says, "I'm sports authority incorporated, and I'm gonna raise $10,000 for AC Norton band." He raises the money, he keeps the money.
Right.
You know, but we never verify that he was a legit organization.
Right.
He, he never obtained approval from the principal to do so, and what's happened is that we've had a lot of organizations going to the same people, asking for money for the same things, and somehow that money is not, you know...
Correct.
Infricating correctly, so...
And, and that's why I do not have a problem with regards to booster clubs, other parent organizations. I think that the policy as a trend needs to omit the, the PTA side of it.
Yeah, it would just have to be very detailed, um, to, to meet that. But I'm just saying, we, we just can't say, because it goes against their bylaws, we can't do it. But if we wanna make policy revisions, I understand that, but we, we just have to be very careful when we do this, because we've been getting jammed by a lot of outside organizations.
Yeah, uh, I agree with Reverend Patello, because a lot of these groups do exactly what he just said. They will say they're doing all of this for, this particular school. The school might get $1,000, they might raise 10, but you know, they might give them something. And then I think we have to be careful, because, uh, I don't see anything wrong with getting the, the person's address, phone number, and telephone, because people can say they're doing a lot of stuff in the name of the school system or trying to help the school system, but we have to maintain our integrity. And if it's going against their, uh, bylaws, which I haven't, I have no idea what they are, are they standard like national bylaws or...
Chairman Bridgeford, can I answer? Yes, they, they, the bylaws that governs PTAs, by what I understand, you have state bylaws which would govern every chapter in the state, and then there are national bylaws which governs all PTAs, uh, across the board. Again, I am not, I, I do not take issue with what, uh, uh, Board Member Patello or what you are saying, Mr. Nance, I understand perfectly with what we're saying with what's happened with that. But what I am saying is just particularly with, with the PTAs themselves, since it will go in direct contradiction of, of their own standing and so forth, that it, this needs to be, that part needs to be omitted, or we need to take this in a different direction?
Well, what I can do is, I can research this, so I can look into it, and then I can work with Mr. Meekins to make sure that we're not violating anything that's out there from state or national standpoint.
Because if this is a discussion, correct?
Just because, I mean, after you do that, because the things that you have listed here, I think if it's possible, they need to be incorporated in what we're presenting to us to approve for our own integrity and protection, because there are many people that will present one way and do something completely different.
Hold on a minute. Yeah, hold on, Mr. Nance, you haven't seen anything, go ahead.
Oh, you're calling? Oh, um, I want, I know in past years, past years, we have had to bail out a PTA because, uh, they ordered, they sold, and they didn't pay the bill. And so the school system had to, because of the integrity, we had to pay, uh, we had to pay the bill, because the treasurer of the PTA, uh, anyway. The other thing too, is that when they open up their checking account, 'cause every PTA has their own checking account, so they cannot use our federal ID number. That's correct. To open us, but if they, if they do have, if they are using our, uh, then they, they come under our audit. I mean, they have to be audited just like we're audited, isn't that right, Mr. Steele? If they're using our...
Well, they're required to keep separate taxes.
Right, they're not, they shouldn't. So every PTA has their own checking account, and they do have the national, uh, constitutional bylaws that they model their, their bylaws.
Correct, and I, and I also understand too, that not only are they separate with banking accounts and ID numbers, they also have their own audit that they are to go through at, at the end of every year through the PTA state organization. I, I guess, i- if I can, um, at the appropriate time, and if this, maybe this is appropriate time or not, but I would move that, um, because there seems to be discussion, and that's a reasonable and fair expectation off of this, but since there seems to be discussion about this, I would move that we would table the vote of, of this, um, the accounting, fine, reporting regulation procedures until the next meeting, so that we can get a better understanding of this, so that there's no heartburn, there's no issues with anyone involved.
I have a question. With the school year starting, and with, uh, purchases needing to be made for different activities and athletics starting, that's before school starts, would this hinder, uh, any purchasing that needs to be done?
No, this will not hinder, because we already have the policy and regulations in place. See, they're just updates to it, so it should not hinder.
So, Kit, is that motion, is that a motion on the table?
Answer questions first. Um, concerning the PTA bylaws, is it that you can't compel them to do so? I mean, can't they voluntarily provide the information?
PTAs are separate, independent, individual...
That's all they ask, though.
That's, well, I'm answering you here.
They can voluntarily provide the information if they're operating within the school. It's just that, I don't know if the bylaws say you can't compel them to do, that's two different issues.
I believe with the changes that has been made, and I understand what Vice Chairman Parent was saying earlier and so forth, I think with the new team that is on board at the city level, with the work that they have put into to make sure that all 19 PTAs are fully audited, that all their, their tax purpose documents are in place, and so forth, that I think we need to give them a chance off of this. And again, I have...
It's not about giving them a chance.
No, it's, um, well, maybe it's not about giving them a chance, but what I am saying though, if there seems to be a discrepancy here with what we're asking to require of them, and if it violates their own bylaws, and it's a fair expectation to go ahead and find out in and of itself, I just move that we table this part even.
Well, I, what I was saying is that if the bylaws state you can't compel them, it seems like they would want to voluntarily offer the information, be open about it in terms of what they're raising in the schools.
I, I, I mean, if I was a, if I was a, an actual serves on a PTA as a vice president member, um, I, I don't know why I would want to give my personal address out, my phone number, to the principal, uh, of that school. I mean, I guess I'm looking at this as, what's the reasonable expectation of that?
Okay, before I make a recommendation, uh...
I had a second question.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
On, on page 3, where it says that, um, student body funds shall in general be expended in such a ways to benefit those pupils currently in school who have contributed to the cancellation. What happens to funds that are, um, if there's an overflow? Let's say they don't spend all of the money, the students who raised the funds?
Those funds stay within that, that account.
So it can be used for, for other...
Uh, Mr. Meekins?
Yes, sir.
With the, uh, discussion that we have now and the question in one area of PTAs, I was gonna recommend that we defer it until the meeting of the 10th. Or we can say, with the exception of the PTA, reworded, and let's have it like that at the beginning, and then let her research and see if the PTA is actually excluded. If y'all did what the exception of the PTA was saying, and if they're not, then we come back and amend that sentence. That's the two that, but from a legal standpoint, I would come to you. Yeah, for board procedure? Yes, okay.
Well, well, my question would be, is when they do their research, and the, whatever the national or the state constitutional bylaws say, could it be incorporated with what this school division would want as well, like amended or whatever? Is that possible? I, I have, I see nothing wrong with finding out the board members' names on the PTA, getting their address and phone number for the principal. I find nothing wrong with seeing what they're raising funds for, because it is for that particular school that all the PTAs are set up. So, is it poss, when you all do your research, is it possible, or would that violate anything with their constitutional bylaws, to have that part amended to add into our requirements?
Well, certainly, I could not answer that now, but I can certainly incorporate that as part of the inquiry.
Yeah.
Uh, as to what we could appropriately do and what...
Exactly.
Impact it may be on their regulations. As long as I can get, I have to confess, right now, I'm a little confused as to the subject matter, only because of this, I can't decide whether we're dealing with funds that are raised for the school activity funds, you know, by parent groups or bands or whatever, that they go out and they raise money and it goes into the school activity funds, vis a vis PTA activities where the funds go into the PTA accounts to be used. And I don't know if we're mixing the two here or not, so I'm, I'm not clear about what the issue is.
I think it's two different things.
Yeah, there's two different things. Yeah, we're, we're talking about funds that they raise in the name of the school.
In the name of the school, but not the, not fall under the, go into their bank accounts for the schools. They're not named school activity funds. We're dealing with the issue of whether the right for the PTA to raise monies, uh, in the name of the school. Right, okay. I can figure that out.
And the school not knowing, raising it and what they're doing.
In other words, could the school sanction it? What is it require, is it required to be school sanctioned? If it is, what kind of requirements can we go, is that, is that what we're saying?
Yeah.
Mr. Parent?
It, in the past, the principal has always been a part of the PTA board. And the pe, and the principal has normally, before school starts, has met with the PTA board, and the PTA has outlined what they're going to do for the year. Now, when I was a principal, the PTA would always come to me, and as I was a member of the board, if they did a fundraiser, then they always came to me and said, "Mr. Parent, we're gonna do this fundraiser, because we wanted to, we wanna give the school, uh, equip, school equipment." And so the principal has always been, well, has, but has always been involved in this whole process. The thing I think that doesn't need to be here, I mean, the annual report, at the end of the year, you get, or they, I guess they still do it, they're, they get their, they, they're supposed to submit a list of all the activities, members, and all that. So we get the annual report of all the members in the PTA, the board members, and all of that at the end of the year, and, and, and a, a little summary of what PTA did for that, that year. The annual budget approved by the organization, we don't get a copy of that, but the annual budget has, has been in the past included in the annual report. The only thing that I think that, that probably should, it's, uh, most recent IRS return greater than two years. I don't, I, I've never heard of the, of a PTA having to do that, I mean, I'd take that bullet out. But those other two, the list of board members and contact information and the annual budget, it's always been in the annual report of the PTA. And that could have changed, 'cause I've gone along there.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you, and I, I hear everybody at the table, and I, I, what Dr. Whitaker has, has asked, you know, compelling, and, and while that's good, and you would hope that you could compel them, that's 19 individual organizations you've gotta compel, these are volunteers, these are parents, they do this of their own accord. I understand that we want to protect the school division from, um, wrong fundraising or fundraising in the name of, um, and I, what I think I would like maybe to look at is to do outside organizations that don't have national charters, that don't have state bylaws. PTAs are run, um, on the essence of volunteerism and, and parent activism, and they, um, for the most part, have a good record. We haven't stated in here that these organizations are not a part of the school board. That is a blanket statement in here. So, my, my take away from this is maybe we have two parts to this. We have people that, you know, organizations that don't have national charters, that don't have other bylaws that govern them, and we're looking for people that may use our name inappropriately to cover us. I see, I, I see the need for two, in my brain, I see this need for two separate pieces of this, if that's the way that we're gonna go, depending on what you find out from the PTA investigation.
And just my opinion, that I'm, I'm, I'll be quiet about it. I, I don't see anything wrong with what's being required. I can understand the IRS returns, Mr. Parent stated, uh, not being required, but I, I don't, I'm not sure why it would be an issue to let the principal know they're raising money for teacher appreciation.
Yeah.
Or they're raising money with cheerleaders.
Right, correct.
I mean, I, I, and I appreciate the piece of it, and all they do.
Yeah.
I do, but I'm not sure why everyone can't be governed by the same, uh, the same rules. I, that, I, I just don't understand that, that's all.
Okay, last round.
No one is talking about not being governed by the same rules and so forth. You're, you're asking, you're requiring of an outside organization that has no ties to the school, meaning that it is not directly tied to the school. The PTA is an independent organization. How this is worded right here, this is saying that booster clubs, PTAs, other parent organizations, and foundations desiring to provide school support via fundraising, volunteer, and/or other services are required. So we're making this a requirement to do the following, and it's all of these things.
But you, but you didn't say anything different. What, booster clubs are not, are not attached to the school board either.
Booster clubs are, are more so tied to the school.
No, they're not, they're their own separate organization.
And this whole discussion, I've just been mentioning only the PTA side of it, that, that is it.
We, we can probably discuss this all, never, it's fine, you get a last shot with them, and then...
A black shot?
I mean, I mean, it's, it's disgusting, and you, and you, and you're the same, you're the same arena.
No, I understand.
And, and we're saying the same thing, we haven't done it.
And we're saying the same thing. We haven't done anything. That's all I'm saying.
I just have a question for Mr. Lamb. Let me ask you this. I don't think it's changed, but it might. Doesn't each PTA, aren't they required to submit to the council PTA president or the secretary of their, of their constitution bylaws? Certain documents have to be submitted to our local PTA council, who then forwards that information to the state. If they don't have certain documents, then they're not recognized by the state PTA. Is that, has that policy changed?
No, that has not.
All right. Well, then that, I mean, that takes care of, there's certain documents and forms that they must submit to the state to be, to be a bona fide PTA?
That's correct, to the state.
To the state.
Unless board members have a problem with this, I'm going to ask Mr. Meekins to, to attach himself to this. And Brittany, you say you're going to look up to see if you can eliminate impossible conflicts and then bring it back, and we'll go from there. And that way, it'll address Mr. Lamb's concern and it'll address other concerns of that board. Okay? In fact, that, that there was a group of that.
That's fair.
Okay. And if you think you can have that by the 10th, let us know if we have to push it off to the 24. But basically, the procedures are there in line for us to operate.
Yes.
Until we get, okay. That's the main thing. Okay, Mr. Lamb?
Thank you.
All right, so that's going to be deferred until the 24th. I'm sorry, the 10th. And if, if we can't work it on, on the 10th, we defer it to the 24th. Okay, item 3, that's point 3, roll call vote, travel regulations. Uh, Dr. Bracy?
At the retreat, this was discussed with you. If further information is needed at this time, let me know.
Leader, any discussion if not?
Lou?
Okay.
Second.
Move and prop the second of the adopt travel regulations, uh, so presented. Any discussion? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Heinz?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Bridgeford?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Item 3.4, we defer it until the 9th, 10th. Item 3.5, roll call purchasing contract. Dr. Bracy?
Yes. Mr. Steele?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent, this is requesting school board approval for one procurement action. This is for the contract from Musical and Music Band Instruments. Invitation for bids, uh, uh, number 845-B-1415, sent out. Nine bids were received. The office, the Princeton Public Schools Office of Music evaluated the bids and determined if the instruments offered met the specifications and the bid requirements. The bidders selected were based on a line item that we, so whatever the, the line item was, we won't bid for that, for that award. Transformation Consulting reviewed and evaluated the bids for school board MWBE program policy compliance. Transformation concluded that the bids met the requirements of the MWBE program and may be considered for contract award. Tab provides additional information of the detailed breakout by line items, and you can see that it's a multi-award. There are six vendors out of the nine that were awarded by line item. And it's recommended that these multiple contract awards be, be awarded by priority line items of funding availability up to the amount of $170, $107,074.42 to the low responsive, responsible bidder in each case needing that instrument specification. Requesting school board approval.
Okay. Mr. Parent? So this means that of the nine bids received, six are going to receive-
Correct.
That's good. I mean, the multiple contracts, I think that would be, now with this MWBE goal 10.74, I don't understand, in comparison, what is that in comparison to? 10.74 for that particular area?
In this case, we did not meet the goal. These particular bidders were not MWBEs, so the, the, the goal was an aspirational goal, so that's what we tried to attempt. In this case, we did meet the goal.
Move for approval.
Second.
Move and prop the second again, about the contracts for the purchases of band instruments. Any discussion? Not roll call, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Heinz?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Bridgeford?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I do have a, a question. Was that to the reason why we didn't have a report given today for MWBE?
Yes, she called, I think it was yesterday, and asked if we deferred until the 10th of next month. The report was not ready. You talking about her annual report?
Yes. Did we ever get, we had questions at the retreat that we, that we ever get those answered?
They were on, that was going to be, that was going to be part of it. Yeah, we gave her the specifics and that all sucked.
And just want to understand, just a clarification. Do we normally give them dates? We want reports over this week?
No. She's normally, you're giving us reports ahead of time. This is the first that I know that she's delayed. She's, she's normally ahead of us.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, we normally don't have to ask her for reports. She's normally ahead of schedule.
Right, thanks.
Okay. All right. Next item is 3.6, discussion policies from VSDA. Uh, Dr. Bracy, I don't know who's here.
Yes, it was, um, the policy committee met and reviewed the, the policies, and they're separated in groups one, two, and three. We reviewed those, uh, Ms. Heinz and Reverend Fleming, and made some corrections and now presenting them to the board members for review. This is discussion, we're not asking for approval at this point because you haven't had time to, to review.
And, and the normal procedures are for us to discuss them one meeting, and then that way you have time enough to read them, because as you recall, you've got three groups of them, one major with massive changes, and then you got one with the minor changes. So, and they were for the roll on, I said, Mr. Parent told me, he said, "Well, I haven't read them." I said, "Well, I haven't read them," so it's going to be, it's going to be deferred.
Is the policy committee able to tell us of any major changes that we need to focus on?
Reverend Fleming's not here, so.
And I'm gonna say I don't remember. There was not, we had them in three groups, and it really was a stack like this. I mean, when you, when you print them out, some of them, a lot of the, they changed a lot of minute words.
Ms. Heinz?
Yes, that, that's what it looked like, and so most, most of them are just clarifying or changing of the verbs, or changing of the shall to, to be, and, you know, changing that. There was really nothing that, that jumped out. Um, I, I would say the last group in your board doc would be the one that probably had the biggest ones.
Group three.
Group three.
The major changes are in group three.
Right. And that was, and I'm sorry, that was close to six weeks ago that we sat and went line by line. And I'll, I'll go back through my notes and I'll send out if you like. But a lot of, like I said, a lot of it was just the verbs and the shall to, to be, and modernizing the language. That's not the correct Joseph Legan's term, but that, modernizing the language.
Mr. Parent?
Just to piggyback on her request, it, it would be helpful if you could just bullet-
Sure.
Any, anything that really needs to stand out to the board that, that we need to look at in particular.
Okay.
One, that would be very helpful.
I'll have it out to you this weekend, so you've got time to look at it.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next item, we're going to go into closed session, and I'll leave item number three off because we have two board members absent, and I left a package at home.
Okay.
Okay, so we go to closed session and then we'll come back up and finish off. Mr. Parent, would you take us to closed meeting, please?
I moved that the board enter into a closed meeting under the provisions of section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the following purposes. Number one, consideration of various personnel matters, including the assignment, performance, and resignation of specific school employees as presented under subsection 8.1. And number two, consideration of a request for religious exemption for the school attendance as permitted under subsection 8.2.
Second.
Move and prop the second, we go to closed meeting and discussion. If not, roll call, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Heinz?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Bridgeford?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Okay, thank you. We're in a closed meeting. All right, we move it on to item number 3.8, roll call vote, employee transaction report. Lord's pleasure.
Move for approval.
Second.
Move and prop the second, if we approve the transaction report submitted by the superintendent, any discussion? If not, roll call, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Heinz?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Bridgeford?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Item 3.9, roll for roll call vote, religious exemption case number 2015-1601, board's pleasure.
Move for approval.
Second.
Move and prop the second, that we approve the religious exemption, it's recommended by the superintendent, any discussion? If not, roll call, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Heinz?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Bridgeford?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Okay, item 3.10 has been withdrawn. 3.11, roll call vote, religious exemption case number 2015-1603, board's pleasure.
Move for approval.
Second.
Move and prop the second again, approve the religious exemption, it's recommended by the superintendent, any discussion? If not, roll call, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Heinz?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Bridgeford?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
I got a correction to make. I don't want to call it this.
Yeah, it's a one phone, the one that was withdrawn.
Yeah, uh, no. Uh, I can't make an item 4.2. It would not be a part of the meeting. I recommend superintendent relocation be item 4.2. That's after German. I can't do that. So it should be item 3.12, okay? So item 3.12 is the superintendent relocation. As you recall, in the superintendent's contract, superintendent will submit three competitive bids that will include self-hand or custom packing estimates. The board or his, doesn't need reserves the right of selection. He submitted his, his three bids today, and I want to read this out so that you all will know and that someone objects, I'll tell you who the low bidder is and he can continue with you. I think he's got it scheduled for the 26th. He had a bid from ARPIN, A-R-P-I-N. Their bid came in at $9,574.82. That's moving them from North Carolina up to here. Technically, he's moving, and this is from rolling off Carolina to Portion, Virginia. Their bid was $2,816. And the last bid was from Southside, moving the storage out of Virginia Beach. Their bid is for $2,755,011. They're the low bidder, and unless the board objects, I'm going to indicate to the superintendent he can go away to be the lowest bidder.
What was the lowest one, you said? Yeah, did you say one was $9,000?
The first one was $9,000.
He's moving them in a Cadillac.
Yeah, we had, had one guy, I don't know if it was in the left field. I guess, I guess he was picking up the discount, the first, the lowest bidder gave him. I don't know. Okay, unless there's any objection, tell them to go ahead with the low bidder so he can get that done.
Do you need a petit motion?
No, I don't need a motion. It's already a part of his contract.
Right.
Okay, unless, unless he does.
That's really cheap, don't you know?
That's real cheap.
And unless there's any low bidders coming forward this board, this meeting, so outside, Dr. Bracy?
Yes, uh, two things. One, didn't have our opportunity at the beginning, but I wanted to introduce to you all the, our new director of curriculum instruction, Dr. Antonia Fox. And also circulating around is the information dealing with complication on the 27th, and it shows that the breakfast, the actual complication, and the lunch that's provided afterwards. For those of you that can attend, just indicate which one of those that you will be present at so we can make sure that we make provisions for that. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Once again, I'll try it. If, unless there's any more bidders coming forward this board, this meeting is adjourned.